Meeting to order. Just a little bit late, I apologize for that. Todd, thank you for being here. That's important to me as always, and Cynthia, and Carly, and me. Kate's not here. I'm assuming she'll be at the board meeting Monday night, so we'll do our best without her. Financial strategy. Dr. Maher.
Well, thank you. The essence of these, of the work sessions is to really do a deep dive into topics that we can't ordinarily get deep into at a regular board meeting. So we, we have the work session to really get deep into a topic. What we want to talk to you about today is a topic that isn't a problem, but it's a topic that never goes away, is something we always talk about. And that's our budget. How do we, how do we make sure that we're planning for today and next week, but also how are we planning for the future? In, in part of our assistance with that conversation, we have a group that is called the Finance Action Network that this district has used for years, certainly predates my time in the Sioux Falls School District. And it's a group of folks who work in the financial industry, who, who come to us and give us advice. They look at our information and they give us advice. We had occasion to meet with this group fairly recently. And really, I'll, I'll give you the very high level of that conversation, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Veek and Mr. Morrison to talk in more detail about the essence of the meeting and the results of the meeting. But really what was talked about is our opt-out strategy, our, as a, as a portion of our total finance strategy. When you think about all of the revenue that we have coming in, one of the things that we've become reliant upon is opt-out. We have two opt-outs currently in place. One of those opt-outs is for seven and a half million and runs its course in 2022.
That's the, that's the, it's out in 2021, it's the final year.
Yeah, twenty, so 2021 is when it's out. So when you think about the, the beginning of the final year, it's not that far away. So we have to begin thinking about, how do we, how do we look at our opt-out strategy going forward? Two things that came up as a result of the Finance Action Network. One was that the opt-out strategy is important for us long-term. Unless there's a, unless there's some sort of change in revenue, in revenue and state aid appropriations, unless there's some change there, opt-outs are a part of our foreseeable future. And then the second issue is, what's the appropriate way to structure those opt-outs? Currently, we have two opt-outs, one for seven and a half million, one for five million. So we have available a total of twelve and a half million dollars. We currently use approximately nine point two million dollars. So how do we structure that? What's the strategy for opt-outs as we go forward? And the best time to talk about that is now before it becomes a critical issue. So that's the purpose of the work session today. And now to put a little detail, detail behind those big issues, I'll turn it over to Mr. Veek.
Thanks. So we're going to, in this PowerPoint, kind of look through what, we went in more detail with the Finance Action Network a month or so ago. If anybody's watching at home, if they're, if they go to the agenda and they, they click on there, they get to item two, they can walk, they can pull up the PowerPoint at home if you would like. So we'll get into this. First thing, first thing we talked about with that group is we always want to be efficient and we want to be effective. And these are some of the indicators we looked at. We have of our neighbor, of our eleven neighbors, we have the lowest tax levy in the area. Out of one hundred and forty-nine districts in the state, we're one hundred and eleventh. Over the last seventeen years, our, our property tax has gone up about one percent a year. And that's after you adjust for the change in valuation of the home. Expenditures per student, we rank below our average peer group. When they, we compare ourselves to, to the nation, nine peers, and includes all, all, all types of costs. Effective, our graduation rate is eighty-four, we're right at the state average there. Our average ACT score of twenty-two point eight is higher than the state's, which is twenty-one point nine, and the national average, which is twenty point eight. You know, if we were a state, of the states that have over fifty percent of their kids take the ACT, or their graduates take the ACT, we'd be number one. So that's kind of interesting. And a new, we're now doing the NCRC test, so platinum and gold achievement rates. We're at forty-six percent, the state average is thirty-one, and the national average is twenty-two percent. So that's a relatively new indicator we're looking at. So we looked at this in detail in, at the April work session, our five-year plan.
Is that pretty clear?
Luckily, everybody's getting in front of them. Not going to talk a lot about this yet, but when we get into the next page, I'm going to leave this one up and then kind of go through it. I'll just point out, this is what Dr. Maher's talking about. The reason we have this in a box and this in a box is because that, when the box starts, that would no longer be a board decision unless we do, do something like extend an opt-out, create a new opt-out or something. So it's just indicating that we've got to do something with an opt-out at, by that time, or that number cannot be what we've got in the assumption right now. That's why we've boxed that. So if you guys would turn, you know, I might have to go back and forth if you can't see up there, but we're going to go to the next page, and then we'll go through kind of what are the risk factors in that five-year plan? And then we'll kind of show how, how they relate to up here. Not all of them do, but, so our current opt-out capacity is twelve and a half million. We're at about nine point one-five right now. Is that capacity adequate as we look out far into the future? Well, Doug took our original seven and a half million dollar opt-out, and just that seven and a half, and we've got twelve and a half right now available to us. But he inflated that at two point five percent a year. And what that would be by 2028 is eleven point four million dollars. So when you opt-out, you typically don't, you, you can't opt-out for an inflating figure. You gotta opt-out a set amount in a set amount of time. So these, unless they grow some other way with a second opt-out, you're, you're, you're subject to inflation with, when you do opt-out. That's one thing we discussed with the group. Opt-out renewal, we've been opting out for ten years, it has a lifespan of that. That's what's kind of caused this, the, the meeting with the Finance Action Network and this meeting today. So you've got it, our, this opt-out is done in 2021. Enrollment growth, if our enrollment growth slows more than we project, and right now, we, we have a projection of twenty-four thousand sixty-eight K through twelve kids next year, and in 2014, we think that's going to be up by about four hundred and fifty kids. If we, if we don't achieve that, our marginal, we don't make as much at the margin, our marginal costs aren't as much as you get from the state that's based on an average. So then your fixed costs eat up more, 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 higher part of the, the pie. So that, that's a danger. Of course, if we, if we go better than that, our budget will look better. But that, that's definitely a risk factor, it's an assumption we have to make. State funding, is it adequate to meet the needs of the district? And FY, after the half-cent tax increase of FY seventeen, we had a point three percent increase in eighteen, one point seven in nineteen, and one point eight in twenty. So, and we talk about this all the time when we talk about the budget. Our salaries and benefits are about eighty-five percent of the general fund budget. The state aid formula is about ninety percent of the non-federal general fund revenues. So when you're going up, you know, the one, one and a half range, that's about what you can afford for eighty-five percent of your budget, at least over the short term, unless you somehow enhance, enhance your revenues. The five-year plan has an efficiency factor in it, and we show that, this efficiency factor right here. We show a one percent efficiency factor next year, which means we grow our budget, and then we gotta take out one, one percent, which is about one point eight million dollars. I mean, to get this whole thing balanced, we're at seven percent out here in the out-years. So if we can't meet that one percent efficiency, we've either have to, our revenues have to beat, our, our student numbers have to beat, something else has to happen, or we gotta do that efficiency. And we do, you know, in talking with the Finance Action Network, they realize you probably can't, you can't sustain that. But we do have out here a quarter percent finally going out in the future. When you total that whole thing up, it's, it's five point six million dollars over the, so if you did nothing, if you don't do that efficiency, you gotta find five point six million dollars in some other way over the course of this plan. The teacher delta, we have an assumption in there. It's right here. We have it at eight hundred thousand, but growing a bit out into the out-years because we just flipped, remember, we flipped the script on having a early retirement incentive to, to paying for experienced teachers. So our, our retirements are kind of down. Eventually, those, those are going to be working themselves way back into the system, so that's why we grow that. But, but if we're off on that to the positive, then it's easier to find your efficiencies. If we're off on that to the negative, if we're not getting the delta, we think, then it's, you gotta find more efficiencies to, to balance the budget. Inflation, we've got two and a half percent going out here in state aid. That's what we got this year. The, the ongoing number went up two and a half percent. We call it one point eight because we called last year's one point, sorry, I'm sorry, one point, yeah, one point seven. But seven tenths of a percent of that last year was, was one time. So it was either one percent and two and a half, or it was one point seven, one point eight. But two and a half percent, are we going to continue to get that? I mean, we've got that once since the new formula passed this year. And prior to that, it was point three and one point oh. So that is another factor that really affects this plan. New school openings, we had a high school and a middle school opening in the future. Now, we've built that in, we put in three million dollars in as a new expense, not, not part of the normal formula, out in the year that they will open. But when you're, you, the more schools you have, with dealing with the same number of kids, the, the less efficient, the more fixed costs you have, and the less, you know, so is that three million dollars? Is that exactly the right number? Is it going to be a little higher? If it's a little bit lower, great. If it's a, it ends up being a little bit higher and we don't get the kids and all, you know, that's a fixed cost that, that we don't inflate those, we don't put those into the plan every year. When, when we increase our fixed costs, we show it as, as an expansion in the plan. So we gotta look at that. Other revenue equalization, when they passed the, you know, they did the, the major reform and they did the half-cent sales tax, they also said, that we didn't do that, we're going to equalize other revenues outside the formula. And we were actually a loser on that in, in the past. So we've got that built into the plan as well, with a plus two million dollars out into the future. You know, the legislature meets every year, and every year, there's a bill introduced, at least one, to do something with the other revenue outside the, that used to be outside the formula that's coming into the formula. So that's a risk factor as well, because that's built into our plan, right here, is additional revenue. Fund balance, where's that at? Way back when, when the Finance Action Network first met, and Doug was on the original one, way back in two thousand and six or something like that, the, it was eight and a half percent is kind of where we were. We've kind of revised that now to, right about ten million dollars is where we need to be at a minimum to cash flow. And, you know, we're, we actually dip below that here in this year. So you can interfund borrow, but as you're allowing your fund balance to, to go lower, A, you've got a cash balance issue, but B, how do you react to, how do you react to a zero percent increase from the state? Or a negative eight point six percent from the state? So maybe you carry some additional, additional opt-out capacity for big emergencies like that, like we're kind of doing right now. That's kind of the thought on that. And teacher pay. State funding alone, you know, if, so we had the, we had the large increase and got the salaries up over fifty thousand in, in Sioux Falls, and, and state average went up as well quite a bit. But since then, we've gotten, in ongoing funds, I'll do it that way, point three, one percent, and then two point five. That's an average of roughly one point four, one point three, one point four percent. What do you, I mean, I don't think we're going to be happy if our teacher salaries go up one point four percent per year. And I skipped over one today. Or I didn't, well, yeah, I'm going to talk about that in a second. So I meant to just kind of blow it off because we're going to talk about it here in a second, but I didn't say it, so I thought, oh yeah, I missed one. But that's right. So let's just give an example of, of, of what happens when our increases are relatively small, what happens in our budget. And so we already, we know about the salaries. If we get one and a half percent a year forever, and we don't somehow enhance our revenues, we're going to have to, our average salary is going to have to end up going up one and a half percent a year. But that's just, you know, that's just the part of it. What about the things that, what about the things that cost more than that? And this is just a real simplistic look at something in our budget. When I came here, we used to budget ten percent a year increases in benefits. And one year, we had to do two of those. And then we negotiated and, and got it, so we're not going to go up over fourteen percent in a year. And then in two thousand and seven, we negotiated again, and we said, if we have to assume ten, twelve, fourteen percent increases in benefits out into the future, we're not going to be able to give much in raises. So we negotiated, and then the district's share will only go up five percent a year. And we've been able to maintain that since that time for over ten years. But the trend, and those of you on the insurance community, you hear this almost every time we meet, at least when the haze group is here, medical trend is seven, eight, nine percent a year. So we just looked at different scenarios of five percent, six percent, seven percent, eight percent, nine percent a year growth in our, just our health insurance and the general fund, and not the federal part of it, just the non-federal part of the general fund. And then what we got for the state on average in that year, one point four seven, I even calculated that a little high. I think it's more, it's closer to one point three, but I had to typo in one of my formulas. But so if you just look at the five, we'll just do the top and the bottom on this. So at five percent, in 2017, that's our base year, seventeen point five million dollars is what we're spending. The next year would be eighteen point four. But state aid doesn't keep up with that, growing at one point four seven percent. It would, it brings it in at seventeen, seven, eighty-five. So if you go down to the table below, the difference in that year is six nineteen, so we gotta come up with six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in that year, just to fund a five percent. And if we were to be more like with the medical trend, and we'll take the high end of the trend, you can see the rest of them, we'd be down by one point three million in one year. And then the next year is two point seven, or on the low end, one point two. And when you, you know, you get into the third year, the out-year of 2020, the year we budgeted for this year, it's one million nine eighty on the low end, and four point four on the high end. And then you add those up, it's three point nine million on the low end, and eight point four over the course of three years. So, you know, my first reaction to that chart is, well, we've guaranteed we're only going to go up five percent. But if our salaries can only afford to go up one point five, and then we're going to push back more of the cost of insurance back to the employees, that just eats into that, into that one point five. And since we put, pay the bulk of the insurance, if we're go, if we go up seven percent, let's say, and the district goes up five, and the, and the employees have to, they go up seven, and then they have to eat the district's two tenths of a percent. Since we pay four times the premium they do, that's a eight, so that's a fifteen percent increase to them, if it was a seven percent increase. So all you're doing is just eating right back into that, so you're, you say, okay, we're protecting the salaries a little bit by limiting ourselves to five. And we've been able to hold it five, we've never gone up more than five, but it's definitely a risk factor we always have to keep in mind. But that's kind of the whole point of that. And that's one, one example. I mean, that's just one. So what's going on in the rest of the state? Forty-four percent of our districts, sixty-five of them total, use an opt-out as part of their funding mix. That's up from thirty percent in two thousand and four. The median levy for those that are opting out is a dollar thirty, one point oh three, one cent per thousand dollars of valuation. The average is one point two seven, so there's some high ones. And that's not weighted, that's just each district is equal. We would way pull down that average, obviously. So that, that, that's not a weighted average. Each community assesses its needs and funding options based on what's available to them. Some might transfer more in the capital outlay and max that levy out or, or what, and, and opt-out for less, or opt-out for nothing. Each district kind of makes its own decision, we know that's the way we do it here anyway. And an example of that is our neighbor to the south, they have an opt-out, it's for two million dollars. Ours is for nine point one plus a little bit. Their opt-out is four hundred and twenty-two dollars per student, and ours equals three hundred and eighty-one right now. And then we're back to kind of like, how do we look compared to our neighbors? That's this chart we tend to show a bit. For owner occupied, we're looking at, there's eleven of us in the area. We were eleventh in owner occupied, our total levy, that's what we try to balance. Like we, when we did the bond issue, we said we're going to lower our capital outlay to offset part of that bond issue, and the two, two together are going to equal three bonds. And commercial, we rank tenth out of eleventh, because the opt-outs are proportional. The commercial, the, the effect on a commercial levy is higher than on an owner occupied. That's why, that's why they're, we're tenth versus eleventh. So, and then you say, well, geez, Sioux Falls, you've got all the valuation. You know, that, you've got over eleven billion dollars of valuation. Yeah, but not per student. In our group, we're seventh. In the state, out of one hundred and fifty-nine districts, we're one hundred and thirty-fifth. So we, we do have a lot of valuation, we also have a lot of students. So when you go on a per-student basis, it looks like that. All right, any questions on any of that stuff? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Doug.
One question.
Yeah.
Because on the bond, originally, you said about capital outlays be like two point eight seven, and then the bond would be like thirteen. So right now, those are two point seven five.
Right, we, we were at two eight seven, and we, we said, no matter, no matter what, we're, we're, the first year, we're going to charge thirteen cents on that levy, no matter what happens with the, with the bond, with the capital outlay issue. Capital outlay, our valuation growth was higher than, it was fairly high. So we lowered that capital outlay levy, but we, but to make that all work, we had lowered the, the special ed levy, we put the back in the, the special ed amount, yeah, so.
Not in that three dollar.
Right, yeah, the special ed isn't, right. But, so next year, we'll be at three dollars between the capital outlay levy and the, the bond issue.
All right, thanks, Todd. So now we'll kind of get into the specifics of the opt-out, and at least, you know, a couple of ways to look at it, and kind of what we covered with the, with the FAN group. So page seven, this chart is really just showing, you know, the opt-out, and how you can see on that chart there, you can see on the left-hand column there, the seven and a half million, and when it runs off after 2021, which is just around the corner, and then you can see the five million that will exist. And then ultimately, out in 2028, if we did nothing, we would be back to no opt-out. So pretty, pretty straightforward. On page eight was the concept that Todd talked about before. It kind of gets lost on people, but we're not inflation adjusting right now the opt-out. So if you think about it back in, in two thousand and twelve, the seven and a half million, if you just inflate that by two and a half percent, you can see out in 2028, it's, it's equivalent to eleven point four million. Because we know that eighty-five, ninety percent of our budget is salaries. So we know these equate to people, and that people are getting increases and whatever. So if we, if we didn't, then we'd have to cover it somewhere else. So it's just a concept that when we looked at the strategy, we kind of had to bake that in, or we're losing capacity over time and not able to fulfill the, the same programs. So page nine is really, the left-hand side of the chart is just the same as the earlier one. It shows the seven and a half, the five million, and then your, your total capacity. And then you'll see an opt-out used column there, which, again, I'm just using the inflation-adjusted number. So you can see out in 2028, that middle column goes to eleven point four million. That's simply adjust, inflation adjusting what we're spending now. It would be, you know, a reasonable proxy of, you know, out in the future, if we were to keep things the same, what we would need for, for an opt-out level. And then, of course, as the opt-outs roll out, we have a shortfall, and then eventually in 2028, we're, we're eleven point four million dollars short. If you, if you equate, and then, and then from a budget perspective, we used the five-year plan, and then we simply inflated that for a reasonable inflation rate. And then you can see that you basically were in the five point five percent range as far as the opt-out used, as amount of the total budget. That's kind of where we're at. So if we look in the future, that's a good marker, and we'll, we'll, we'll cover that, come back to that in a minute here. Yep.
So looking in that middle column, opt-out using, you know, today's date, nine point one, when we go to 2022, I don't see like, looking at this, would we want to add another, get two million in that column as well? Since we know we're going to have that jump in salaries, that's kind of where it's, so instead of like being at nine point three one, should we be looking at eleven point three one at that too? Number wise, not as far as inflation of the opt-out currently, but in our minds, is that how it would be?
Yeah, so when, in a couple of slides, we'll kind of, yep, we'll, we'll try to tie that together. So, so page ten is, is again, we're, we're showing on the, the left-hand side, the, the opt-outs. Now, we're sort of, at this point, targeting a, let's just say that we wanted to have a, a fifteen million dollar opt-out in, out here in 2028. And I'll come back to why that, how that fifteen point million kind of plays out into using it as the opt-out and then having some capacity. But one way, and, and one way to build that fif, to that fifteen million dollars over time, or whatever na, whatever number you want to plug in there, is to start a opt-out ladder almost, much like you have, like you've seen a CD ladder. And so you're not doing these herky-jerky, seven million here, five million here, three million here, and then having to react to it. You're more or less building, you're starting to build it a little bit over time. And then so each year, you can look out in the future and you say, okay, inflation is running this much. I, in ten years, I, I need to target this much. And you can start to, you can start to target a, a amount every year, reacting to the circumstances at the time to try to build that. So then each year, only essentially, some, some small portion is rolling off, right? And then you're replenishing it based on what you're looking at as far as your current, current conditions. So in this scenario, we would start as soon as, as this year, if you will, I call it this year, but really the next, you know, you would start to build smaller increments and let the others fall off so that eventually you get to what we're calling fifteen million here, which is a placeholder, and we'll come back to that. So that's kind of the strategy that we, one of the strategies that we discussed with the, with the FAN committee. And then page eleven, we'll probably bring that home a little bit. So page eleven, you can see essentially what we're, for here, page eleven. So on page eleven, you have this, what I, what we'll say, opt-out amount used at this point. We're going to just use the inflated number, because we're just trying to keep up. We're not trying to increase the opt-out per se for, at this point, for additional programs and things like. and things like this. We're just trying to keep up. And so we're using that inflation-adjusted number out here, which we know comes over to this 5.5% number here where the, where the light is there. And then there's the concept of capacity. In other words, the, back to all the factors that Todd was talking about was, I should have some additional capacity, just like today, I have, I have 12.5 million available, but I'm only using 9.1. I have some capacity to react to something. And if we look in 2018, we had about, we have about 1.9% of excess capacity of the total budget amount. And so looking at two factors, one would be the usage, adding in another one and a half, 1.7% excess capacity is sort of how we came to our $15 million number that we discussed with the Finance Action Team as a target number for, out in 2028 to build, build towards. Then the next chart would simply say, as we've always said, we're, we're, we have a good track record. We only use, we've only used what we've needed. And so we're using 9.1 of the 12.5 that the community's entrusted with us today, but we, we ran some numbers as far as what we, if we take a reasonable amount change in valuation. And then we look at the couple of things. We look at the total amount of opt-out, if we truly used every, all the amount that are available, and then we have an opt-out amount actually used back to the 11 million. And then you can see what that would mean from a levy perspective, per $1,000 of assessed value and then to the average homeowner, which we've been using $185,000. So the, probably the key thing is to look at the far right two columns here and you can see today, we're in that 57 cent range. And essentially, as we grow as a community, that should drop per $1,000 to the taxpayer. So as we, if we grew to 15 million or we grew from, let's just say 9.1, using 9.1 million to 11.4, we should see that go down, you know, at least on, but we, but out of fairness, we did show what it would mean if we were using the total 15 million. Because, not to say we would, but if some of those risk factors came in, we might have to. So on April 23rd, we met with our, our FAN committee and if you see these folks out and about, they came in and devoted, you know, a significant amount of their time to studying a lot of the background. Luckily, they're, they all re-upped again, so we didn't have to cover the basics of school funding, which as you know, is a bit confusing at times. And so they were kind of, they met about two years ago. And, and so they were pretty well-versed in our things. We updated them on the budget, went through, you know, sort of the risk factors and kind of the state of the state and what's been going on. So, and then basically what we took away from meeting with them and what their conclusions were was that I think it's safe to say that the, you know, the, the opt-out is a critical component of the school district budget. I think if you knew, if you took 7.5 million, those are people, staff out there, if we didn't have those, we'd be doing away with significant programs and, and significantly impacting the quality of the education that our kids are, are receiving. So that the, the current opt-out allows us to deliver that current level of programming, but it also allows us some risk mitigation towards inadequate funding at the state or federal level or any level if that were to occur. They certainly were mindful, as we've seen it go down, is that the fund balance is the lowest it's been in 25 years. And it's, it's, as Todd said, once we get below that $10 million mark, I call it the Mendoza line for those baseball fans, but there's a line that you just don't want to go below. We're, we're reaching that line, quite frankly, and that's not longer, no longer a, a option for us, really. Expiring the 7.5 million, if we weren't to re-up that or have a plan to replenish that, that would be catastrophic to our district, they felt. They've acknowledged we've been fiscally conservative with the amount of opt-out that we have used. So we've, we've been authorized to use 12.5, we've only used, you know, 9.1 at this point. So we've always tried to say, every school district is different in the tools they have to bring their funding together. At the end of the day, it's that levy, that $8.6 or $8.60 that, you know, per homeowner that is critical, that's the bottom line. And that's what we look at and when we look at all the components. The 10-year target of 15 million out there, they thought was reasonable in order to keep the purchasing power of that 7.5 million at a 5.2% of the budget and 2% of the contingency. Although I can say, there were several comments that said, is 15 million enough? And, you know, we said, it's just one of those things that I think when you, and to the next point is that the laddering approach to the opt-out has some merits, but they felt that was your decision. But they certainly understood the merits of it. And I, I think it brings it back to when we do one-time amounts here and there, here, it's, it's very hard to react to anything without having a series of, you know, 5 million expiring here, 7.5 million expiring here, 4 million here. So we're mindful of the 15 million, we're comfortable with it now. In two years, will it be the right amount? Maybe not. But if it's not, we can, since we're doing something every 10 years to build to that, we can react to that on a real-time basis as opposed to always trying to project when things are falling off, falling on. It's just more of a regular cycle. It's an extension of the budget, of the budgeting process, instead of a, every 10-year event where we're catching ourselves behind the eight ball. So, so that's really, in a nutshell, kind of the opt-out strategy that we looked at and, and brought a group together because you make sure that we're seeing things right. And I don't know, Dr. Maher, Todd, me, from the FAN or group, anything that we missed as far as their comments or?
I think that's a great summary of where we are. So this is the same information that we shared with the Finance Action Network. Really, at the end of that, it was, what do we do now? What do we do now? And our answer was, bring it to the board. And you saw the same information that the Finance Action Network saw. You've, you've seen the, the options for strategies that we've come up with so far. But in the end, it really is, well, what do you think?
Would you go back to that slide seven, or page seven? And then, so my question would be, if we did do the ladder approach, what would be the first year we could start? I mean, when is the first time we can start giving that deadline of doubt to add down on because when, so even say we started in 19? I guess that's my question, because we're losing 7.5.
Yeah, we're losing, that's a good question. We're losing 7.5 in 2022.
But we want to start it before that, the laddering. So when is the first year we can and do that so that we have equal out, plus if we have the programming additions of the new high schools that we're still?
If we did?
Not actually, actually using it possibly, but being safe.
So if we did 1.5 million a year and we started, let's say, started next year, we can't do it this year, this calendar year. So that'd be 2020. So you'd have 4.5 million, you know, do it, if you assume on 1.5 million each year for 2020, 2021, 2022.
So it'd be 9.5.
So then you'd be at 9.5. You wouldn't, you'd be a year without that cushion.
But that's the year we're programming.
But we do have that, we do, we have that 3 million in the, already planned into the, into the budget.
So that's making sure that we just still have that capacity as well.
Right. But you're, right. If any of those other factors go haywire the next three years, you can always make an adjustment in, you know, in your third year if something catastrophically happens to the budget. Where if funding is at zero or something from the state, we can't sustain any, you know, what we do.
And there's no state law about the number of opt-outs you can have active at one time or?
Not yet.
Sure. I'm just, you know, curious about those things that we're not.
No, there isn't one.
Okay. And there isn't, I mean, I like the lower amount laddering, I'm just, in that we could maybe adjust if something had occurred and so forth. So that's, I'm just curious that we're not, not looking at something else, problem that occurred.
Any other questions? To me, what it, what makes sense about it is, as a homeowner, if you, if you have contingency fund for emergency repairs, for, for home maintenance, you do that strategically so that if the furnace goes out, if the air conditioner goes out, if you have a structural problem, if you have whatever those things are, you plan ahead for that. And I think doing this on that laddering approach, it gives us the opportunity to continue to monitor, us, you, to continue to monitor this year after year and make the, make the small adjustments rather than going out and saying, we need to do $9 million because we've fallen behind on this or that. It just, to me, is, it's, well, it's doing what the Finance Action Network has done for us, is looking out ahead to make sure that we do a good job planning for what our financial needs are going to be so that we can continue to offer the same really high-quality programs for 24,000 students. You are able to provide for the diversity that our school district has by doing good financial planning and not having those, those huge drop-offs. So that laddering approach makes a ton of sense to me. Other questions? All right. Well, thank you for that. Actually, the first year of the Finance, Finance Action Network was 1996. Dr. Keegan had a group together, Dale Froelich was, was the chair of it. That was when he was involved at Business Aviation. He's an attorney and a CPA, plus that business ownership. And that was the first time that that group was ever brought together. So, I mean, this has had a long, very successful history. So, thank you for your work on this, Doug, Todd, Dr. Maher, and all the members of the group. Yes. Yes. All right. Then we are finished with that. Public input specifically on the financial strategy piece. One, two, three, okay, we're done. We move on to board committee reports. Mr. Tulkey.
I am ashamed to say I missed the PTA meeting.
Shocked.
Quarterly PTA meeting. And then I have not been, we haven't had a sports authority meeting. And of course, my esteemed associate, Cynthia, will elaborate on the insurance committee.
All right. Thank you.
Insurance, everything seems to be on track. We had talked a long time ago about the basically two-thirds premium holiday that was, we voted upon and that was received. So that's all going forward and probably have the summer off, I think, pretty much on that, maybe coming up. Calendar, we just approved at our last board meeting, our calendar for 2021. So that's August 27th start date. That's out there for people to view. Sioux Falls Education Foundation, Beryl House, check was about $550. We've, we had a meeting yesterday and we had a financial strategy meeting last week on planning for the big event in November and the, I had something else that was coming up that we did too. Oh, the teacher swap meet is coming up. So, so if you want to participate, any teachers or retired teachers or new teachers want to participate in that, that's coming up. And affordable housing, we did not meet.
Path, we met briefly. We all got an invite to that SDSU meeting, so we briefly talked about that. A lot of other topics that are going on right now. Cynthia talked about the calendar. And then policy, we just had a, I think, three of them that had very minor changes. So you'll see those for the next meeting, just review revise type of stuff, so just take a peek.
All right. Thank you. Budget, you guys have been doing the hard work on that. And then the budget, final budget approval will be at that first meeting in July on the 8th. And the Chamber Board, groundbreaking, lots of good things going on with Chamber. And STI policy, we've not met since our, since our last work session. And this being my last work session on the board, I want to thank all of you for what you do. It's, makes my job easy. So, thank you. I can't give a speech.
We'll save that for the last board meeting.
Yeah, well, sure. Yeah, I won't get through that either. So, anything else to come before the board? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.